Welcome to the June 23, 2025, meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Murray, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
To our Creator, thank you for summer. Thank you for the warmth of the sun, although maybe a little less. And thank you for the increased daylight. Thank you for the beauty we see all around us and for the opportunity to be outside and enjoy creation. Thank you for the increased time we have to be with friends and family and for the more casual pace of the summer season. The summer, as it always is, will be full of new experiences for families, friends, and all Sanduskeys. New jobs, new experiences, and perhaps vacations to places we've not seen before or just time to unwind. As we grow and stretch and recreate and recharge, recreate and reinvigorate us anew so that we can better discern, champion, and fulfill the needs of our neighbors. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Murray, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Bajali?
Here.
Mr. Coons?
Here.
Mr. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Fargo?
Here.
Mr. Wantington?
Commissioners, yeah, before the minutes of our meeting of June 9, 2025, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wanting.
I move that we supplement it so the June 9 meeting is presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. I have the honor of reading a proclamation in honor of Pride Month that we have developed a good habit of acknowledging each year for the past several years in my recollection. I'm going to dispense with a lot of the whereas's. I think that that gets tiresome, and I think it might make a little more sense. The 1969 Stonewall riots in Manhattan were a tipping point for the gay liberation movement in the United States for persons to identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or queer LGBTQ. And in the years since the month of June, has been designated across America as Pride Month, recognizing the impact LGBTQ individuals have had on history locally, nationally, and internationally. Sandusky, Ohio, is the birthplace of Jim Obergefell, lead plaintiff in the Supreme Court's landmark Obergefell versus Hodge's decision, which legalized same-sex marriage nationwide. On June 2021, Sandusky honored Mr. Obergefell with the key to the city, recognizing Sandusky as the birthplace of marriage equality and recognize his continued dedication to a future where LGBTQ plus people are safe, seen, and celebrated through board service and community involvement. During the last weekend of June, the annual Sandusky Pride Festival will take place in downtown Sandusky, an all-inclusive event endorsing equality while targeting togetherness and unity, including a community-wide event that kicks off with a parade on Saturday, June 28 at 11:00 a.m. on Sherline Park. There is still much work to be done for love to prevail, and the city continues to advocate and do good works to achieve equal justice and equal opportunity for LGBTQ Americans and protect people against hate crimes and violence based on sexual, racial, and gender identity. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Sandusky City Commission hereby proclaims June of 2025 as LGBTQ Pride Month, and the city of Sandusky calling upon residents and visitors to come together to remember those who have killed, who have been killed or wounded by acts of hate or violence and committed themselves to acceptance of diversity and putting an end to senseless acts of violence. Signed this 23rd day of June, Dick Brady, President of the City Commission. Thank you. Mindy, do you want to come up and accept this?
Oh, my goodness.
Hate to put you on the spot like that.
I would have dressed for you.
That's all right.
But I would. Thank you.
I'll meet you over there. Now, you know none of you are compelled to sit through this entire boring meeting. You do know that, don't you?
Sorry.
Next on our agenda is a public hearing regarding an amendment to our Landmark Commission. That public hearing will be conducted by our chief planner, Aaron Blair. As this is a public hearing, we'll take questions and comments from the public and from the commission at the conclusion of Ms. Blair's hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner President Brady. One of the specific goals of our strategic plan is to increase the awareness of historical significance of our architecture in our community and landmark properties in our community. One of the ways that we do that is through the Sandusky Landmarks Commission. Historic preservation is popular and supported across the community, and our historic architecture has irreproachable craftsmanship and contains the stories of our community. As you know, preserving these buildings has a number of specific challenges and opportunities. We have to be careful to preserve the character of the architecture, which is how we know the buildings are preserved, they can live on for another 100 years, protects the property values and the surrounding property values, but also allow changes to be made in order for those buildings to take on new life. We have expertise on our Landmarks Commission in order to help make these decisions when someone comes to the commission and asks to make changes to that historic property. The commission has some experts and some volunteers who just care about historic preservation. And historic preservation is a niche field. It's not taught in all types of programs. I was stymied to find at Knowlton in the Architecture School when I was there that historic preservation is not regularly taught to architecture students. So it tends to be a niche and specific, passion-driven expertise that people look after. We don't always find that within our city, of residents in our city, to sit on the board that have historic preservation expertise. And we've had trouble filling the Landmarks Commission with members that do bring that to the board. So the board directed staff to draft changes to the makeup of the commission that would allow only to up to two members of the board to sit and be residents outside the city if they also still have a significant connection to the city. And that is the proposed change that we brought forward that was accepted by the Landmarks Commission and the Planning Commission. So this public hearing is to accept public comment about the change, suggested change to the Landmarks Commission membership organization to allow up to two residents to live outside the city if they have a specific connection to the city, like they own a business here, they've owned property here for years, or some significant connection to the city.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Any comments from the public regarding this potential piece of legislation, this change?
Westpool, 1939, East Old Gate. The information indicates that this is necessary to maintain our status as a certified local government, which indicates if we don't, we lose our opportunities to get funding. I would suggest that that's not accurate. The actual criteria, although it would be nice to have architects and engineers on here, it simply says as available in the community. So it's misinformation that this is imperative we do it for that reason. Beyond that, then you talk about whether or not we should have people from outside the community on our committees. The commission has stood for a long time and said, no, that we're going to try to use people in the community. I'm not locked in on that. Many people in the community are thought about that, but what I should suggest about this is, we have adequate people in the city of Sandusky to fill these positions. They just choose not to do that. I think this is your opportunity to say, wait a second, let's hold our horses here. We should be trying to say, why don't these folks, we have the old house guilt, that it must be plenty of people with the expertise to do this, to serve on this committee. They just choose not to. I think before you start changing this law, that you should probably take a peek at finding out why qualified people in Sandusky are not signing up for not just the Landmark Committee, but as you've stated before, different commissioners, that we have trouble getting folks to participate in all of our committees. And I would suggest that this opens the door for the conversation that perhaps we should see, what are we doing that people say they don't want to work in our communities? First of all, it's nice that they found a couple folks that are friends of, that they know, that are willing to serve from out of town, probably perfectly good folks, but that didn't solve our problem. So I would recommend that you just say no, or table it, or whatever you'd like to do, and find out why we can't get people to serve in large numbers because we have many people serving on multiple committees, which gives us a very narrow point of view on just about all the decisions that are made in the city. So it would be nice if you try that. Just give you that to think about before you make your vote. Thank you.
Thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Paul. Additional comments from the public regarding this change in amendment? Comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons?
I have a few questions and concerns. When I look at this section that states to maintain our status as a certified local government, CLG, through the State Historic Preservation Office, the city's landmark ordinance also requires the commission to have representation of at least two members in one of the following disciplines: architecture, history, planning, archaeology, or related disciplines. And when I look at that, I think of some of the members who are there. I think we have history and archaeology and even planning at times covered. So the question I would have is, why is it so necessary to have somebody who has architecture experience? I would defer to Commissioner Crable, for instance, because of his will-well and knowledge on so many of those issues concerning buildings, right? And I think that he serves in that capacity well. So that would pose a problem for me. And then there's this idea, I heard the words or the term "significant connections." How would we define what that means, a significant connection to the city? So where I'm going is, you know, when I think about the role of the Landmark Commission, if I didn't have the expertise that somebody else had, but I fit a couple of those other categories, I would do the research or I would defer to somebody else. So I'm just standing in that place where I don't see the necessity of actually having to have two individuals outside our city who do this. So that's where I'm standing. I wanted to make sure that I made that public. I also heard some comments that I absolutely agree with, and one is, when you have a hard time trying to find folks to serve, right, or they can't serve, wrong. Then what are we doing as it relates to providing some kind of forum, some kind of workshop, some kind of educational opportunities so they can learn what the responsibilities and obligations are of those people who serve on those committees? And because if they get that, more people might show up and say, I have that, I'll serve. So I think a little bit more of that should be done before we just cut straight to the chase and say, no, we should open it up to outside folks from outside of Sandusky. I'm not that person. I'm for Sandusky residents who have businesses, who own homes, who have expertise right here in our city, and that's where I'm going to be standing.
Thank you, Commissioner Coons. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Fargo.
Aaron, can you, what currently, let's say you have an opening. What is the process right now? What do you guys do to recruit for all of these boards? My other question, two questions then to that is, you know, obviously, I'm on the BZA one. Everyone comes to cemetery. I don't know, they all come to that one. But the BZA, we miss people all the time, and it is frustrating to our residents and things. So I hear what Richard is saying, I hear what you're saying. I'm sort of in the middle a little bit because I've been on both sides. We had an expertise issue the other day, and John Fike's in control. He runs the BZA board, but he's going to be moving out of town. And so I'm thinking, I really don't want to lose John because he was the only one on the board who understood and knew where to look for what we needed to know. So there's a lot going on, but my first question is, what is the process? And then as far as recruiting goes, what are we doing about that?
That's a good question. There is always an open application for volunteer interest in boards and applications on the city website. There has been efforts throughout time to advertise those and ask for more participants. It's my understanding about five years ago, there was a big call for more people to get involved, and that did help getting some more folks involved. And then as far as filling the landmarks specifically, we asked each of the board members, former board members. I called architecture firms that are local around and said, hey, do you have any architects that like historic preservation? Maybe, do they live in Sandusky? No, okay, next. So there was some individual targeted outreach that we did. Specifically, I think from the architecture perspective, we had an architect sitting on the board, and he regularly brought up things that staff had not considered and the other board members weren't asking, questions that they weren't asking. It led us to a higher level of rigor to make sure we are protecting those buildings. And when he left the board, I really felt that absence. That's probably why the board architecture specifically has come up a number of times. But even contractors, like we had a former member who had a contracting business in a different state, and then she moved here and she fixed up two buildings. So she had that not only other experience in all different types of commercial contracting, she also worked on two limestone buildings, which is a really significant part of the architecture in Sandusky. So that's a couple things that have come up, so we just kind of ask around.
Okay, so is it, so I'm hearing a little bit that maybe there is something we could look at to try to have maybe a better outreach to community. But I will say, and what Richard brought up, you know, I'm almost 60 years old, and for six years, I've been watching the same people always step up, you know, whether you're at school and it's the same parents, or it's the same people volunteering to run for commissions or boards. It's an unfortunate part of our society that people don't give back as much as we'd like them to do that. But how can we, you know, what can we do about that? How can we motivate that? Advertising on our website, I think, is a little bit, I wish we could make it a little more public somehow. I don't know if the newspaper could help with that. But I will go back to my last comment then as far as having someone on there for certain boards. Again, we had a question about a fence around a pool, someone building a new pool the other day, and the Ohio law was different than the city law. And so they're figuring that all out, but John was able to, Fike was able to say, hey, I know that there's something not the same here, we need to really look into this. And so that was, he challenged that, and they handled it, and they're handling it. But the point being is, he does have that knowledge, and I certainly, being on the Building and Zoning Committee, I don't have that knowledge. I'm learning every day, every time I'm in a meeting and trying to ask the right questions. But I do feel, when we talk about preserving our architecture and our beauty of our community, that it is important that there is someone that has some knowledge about architecture, design, history, any of those things. I do believe that. So that's where I'm at, and as you can tell, I think I'm in the middle, kind of stuck right at the moment. But I also wanted to know, what about all these committees that were struggling to have people arrive and come to the meetings? They say they're supposed to be there, and then they don't, and we've had to send people home and didn't get their business done with the city because we weren't prepared. The communication wasn't good. So what do we do about that across the board? Is this something you just want to do one at a time with these boards? You know, you're doing the Landmark Commission now, but like the BZA and other boards that have had the same issue. What are we going to do about those?
Good question. The Law Department has looked at each of the codes, each boards that we have, and there is some nuance there because some boards need a lot of expertise and some boards maybe don't. Some boards are making decisions that are legally tied to the parcel, like the Board of Zoning Appeals, and some boards are making, you know, more just recommendations or higher level analyses. So I think it's the pleasure of the commission how you direct staff to take a look at solving those issues. Some cities do have attendance requirements, so if you miss a specific number, you're asked to not be on the board anymore. We don't have anything like that, so we haven't asked folks to step down, even if their attendance is low typically. Something that could be a potential solver for the lower attendance. With landmarks, we haven't had issue with attendance, it's specifically been the expertise that we've been looking for. And even someone that owned a business in Sandusky, even if someone owned a historic piece of architecture and had invested a lot in it, if they don't live within city limits, they're not eligible to be on that board right now.
Sure, yeah, I understand that. Okay, thank you.
Additional comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Just a little bit of background. I mean, so it's important to know that this request came from the Landmark Commission itself.
Yes.
Because they're struggling with these issues. And then just a little bit of background, we did go through a pretty complete process of reexamining all the boards and commissions, I'm going to say, three years ago or so, and we did a lot of things to bring them more into alignment. It was my recollection, and Mr. Hastings may know this better than I do, but you weren't here at the time, it was my recollection that we put in something like a three, you know, you missed three meetings and you're off. I thought we baked that in, maybe we didn't.
I had heard that.
That's what I thought. Maybe it got missed.
I don't know that we codified it. Maybe it was a policy discussion.
Yeah, that's in our charter for commission members, lucky you. But it is not in many of our boards.
Well, that would be a good thing to consider.
Let's just start.
It seems to me because, and I think that the liaisons, staff liaisons of these various committees need to report that up to either the city manager or the law director or the commission. And I understand that, you know, sometimes these committees get to know each other pretty well, but you can't have six months of excusing absences just to be polite. Just, I mean, we need some more teeth in this so that if we have board members who aren't showing up, we need to do something about that.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Murray.
The other thing, when I was on board of zoning, we had, I sat here, snowing outside, and had four or five families show up that wanted something to look at, and I'm sure Kate's already had that happen to her, sit in the crowd, and we're waiting, waiting, waiting. Two or three of us up here. And that's why I pushed at the time, Mr. Murray, to have the liaison if in event, if I could have voted, and the same thing with Mr. Murray on that, if we had access where we can vote, then I don't have to send these people home and wait another month to come back. And then, you know, you're rolling dice, and we're going to have enough people show up.
How difficult is that change to make, Mr. Ray?
That is up to the, actually, we have already drafted a new ordinance for BZA. I don't know where it is in the process to allow the liaison to vote.
Commissioner Pacheco.
That will be coming before the Planning Commission Wednesday night?
Yes.
So we are going to.
Pretty far down the line.
To look at that, yeah. And I don't know if Mr. Murray's done or not. I was going to make a.
Mr. Chairman. Sounds like he's done. Go ahead. Mr. Wanting.
Should we look at all the boards or the other ones that have problematic areas?
I think a comprehensive look at each one of them is certainly warranted. I will say this, it certainly is warranted, a comprehensive look, and I'm going to ask the Law Director to begin that process with your folks' approval, of course. But it is somewhat of a slippery slope because we are a small community, and you're right, we continue to ask to ask the same people to serve in a variety of roles. And this city runs on the backs of a lot of volunteers. And it is a difficult message to deliver when you're asking someone to volunteer and then for valid or invalid reasons, they don't show up. To be courageous enough to say, hey, maybe this isn't for you, we need, you know, we need to move on and you need to step back. But I think perhaps with some codifying those things and getting a consistent approach to it will stiffen all of our backs, so to speak. Additional comments? Mr. Crable.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm, the old expression, betwixt and between on this. I really would like to think that we have the talent. Maybe we need to develop the will locally to participate and be part of these committees. I think it probably would behoove us to look at our committees, see where the problems exist, look at it a little more globally before we take action on this one. Yes, it came before the Landmark Committee, which I sit. And I understand where staff's coming from. I do. But I would like, I guess I would like to see if there isn't a stronger way of recruiting local talent. Whether it's the owner of an architectural firm not living in the city, do they have an employee that lives in the city? You know, might they make a recommendation of someone who has the appropriate skill set? But bottom line is, I guess I would like to maybe suggest that this issue be tabled until we can look at the broader picture of committees and structure.
Thank you, Mr. Crable. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. Chairman, I think all good comments around the table, and maybe we ought to have kind of a two-track where this is in front of us tonight, I think we ought to vote on this. I would ask my colleagues around the table, can you name me an architect, with the exception of John Fike, that lives in the city? Can anybody name me one? How about planning? I guess Tom Horseman or Aaron, but their staff. Are you a planner, Mr. Coons?
Yeah, yeah. I wanted to answer a question because you put it out there, right?
Second, Mr. Pacheco. Go ahead.
And archaeology experience, I don't, does anybody know anybody that lives in the city? History, I think we can find people that maybe have some history. But the SHIPPLE guidelines say we need these two disciplines. We should adhere to the SHIPPLE guidelines. And when you talk about having a stake in the community, I think the nexus is, if you own property and you pay taxes in this community, you've got a stake in this community. You may not live here, but you've got a stake in this community. And this is coming from a guy who would say, well, we should still have residency requirements for our staff. But I was, I'll admit, I was wrong about that because we wouldn't have some of these staff people we have today. So I think this is warranted. I would have, the Planning Commission voted five to one for it. I wouldn't have voted for it if we would have gone to consider other commissions and boards as far as residency goes, because I think you've got to take them one by one. But I think in this case, I'm a yes vote.
Mr. Chairman. Last. If you have a comment, I'm going to kind of narrow this down because we have legislation that will come before us that we'll have a discussion on. But if you have a question for Ms. Blair or a question regarding this change, that's certainly appropriate now.
No, it was just related to the fact that, you know, if somebody has a business and they're invested in the community, but then the language would have to change in the ordinance that's before us, right? Because it's not specific to that. So I agree with that part of what Commissioner Pajali had to say. Yeah, if they're vested interests, they have a business here in this city, I'm with it.
Ms. Blair, can you clarify what the language is?
The draft language says up to two members could live outside of city limits if they provide historic preservation expertise and they have a substantial connection to the city by owning property or a business in Sandusky or other substantial connection as defined by city commission when appointing.
So that is included in, that's what you're asking for is included in the language?
Yes. And if there's a moment where a candidate was before you that did not own property or own a business, it would be when you were making the appointment, if you would evaluate their connection as significant enough to be appointed to that board. So maybe it's someone who grew up and spent every single summer here, but now they live in Avon, and you think, yes, they are a member of our community, we count them as our community, and they would be appropriate to serve on this board. But if in that moment you think, no, then you would vote no on that appointment. But it does specifically say owning property or a business would be part of that definition.
Owning property or a business would qualify you.
And Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pacheco.
So you're saying that those nominees will come before this body's approval?
Yes.
So that's just one more check and balance we have in place?
Yes. Every candidate has to get approved by the city commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Crable.
Yes, but that's an awkward situation, that you bring someone before us to be approved, and then we turn them down.
Well, we vote now.
That's kind of an awkward situation here.
Ms. Fargo. Understood. Additional comments, questions regarding this change in the amendment? If not, I'll declare this public hearing closed. Thank you, Ms. Blair. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name and address, your agenda comments. I'd ask that you keep your comments to three minutes.
The afternoon, Larry Fletcher, 13 Twin Oaks Drive, Milen, Ohio.
Larry Fletcher, 13 Twin Oaks Drive, Mille in Ohio. Good afternoon, Commission. President Brady, Vice President Murray, members of the Commission, all gathered here. Representing the Erie County Visitors Convention Bureau, but along with the Ottawa County Visitors Bureau, Form Shores and Islands, Ohio. And we're here in support of Agenda Item Number Four regarding the proposal for the purchase and installation of 10 security cameras. At the outset, I would like to say that I have the Chief Oliver and members of his team. I saw the sheriff at a meeting earlier today and expressed the same to him and members of his team. They are here for our residents. They are here for our visitors in an area that has millions of visitors a year. Their jobs are even more complex and risky than they would be if we didn't have this robust tourism economy. I believe most of the members of this Commission know that about a month ago, our organization was approached by Mr. Orzak, along with our county administrator, Hank Solaway, requesting that the Erie County Visitors Bureau fund $125,200 for the purchase of the cameras for both within and outside the city limits. This was the first time we had heard about these cameras being installed in the city or the proposal for them to be installed. We didn't have these funds budgeted, and we weren't sure at the time if this Commission had even approved the use of them. So I took this to my board officers. The board officer said, let's take it to the full board, the Erie Board, which we did. And after sufficient and significant discussion, the board's decision was to table the decision, pending a conversation with the city and county about this issue and what role our organization should play in both, you know, ensuring the safety and security of our region and protecting its reputation as a safe place to visit. And we understand from this agenda item that that timeline that we had doesn't line up with the timeline of the city and the county. But I'm here to say that we think that there are some funds that are generated largely in part by tourism that are available for the city to invest in these cameras. For example, the city of Sandusky collects a municipal lodging tax. In 2024, it was over $2 million. That municipal lodging tax comes back to the city for use as it chooses. I would, I would submit that our marketing efforts not only help the county lodging tax, but also help grow that municipal lodging tax. City also receives about another $10 million annually in admission and parking taxes collected in large part from visitors to the region. Shores and Islands could afford to pay for this, but it would come at the expense of pulling money from the budgets that we have in place for our marketing efforts, for various grant programs, and other community support. In addition to the impact on lodging and admission tax I mentioned, this year in Sandusky alone, over $220,000 was awarded to 11 projects through our Destination Development Grant Program. That brings the four-year total to $890,000 in investment specific to the city of Sandusky. Last year, Shores and Islands supported seven community events in the city with over $27,000 in grants. An additional 16 events were sports-related. Over $100,000 went to sports-related grants.
Mr. Fletcher, I'm up against the timeline on that. You gotta, you gotta wrap up there pretty quick.
All right. Yes, I would just like to say that, that this is an important investment, for sure. We feel that the efforts through our marketing and our various grant programs provides much more in return of investment back to the city than what is being proposed that the city would spend to purchase these cameras. Having said that, we still would like to have conversations. We've always been open and collaborative, so we'd like to sit down with the city and county to explore more what our role is moving forward in protecting the public and also protecting the region's reputation as a safe place to visit. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. We're going to have to extend the time limit to four minutes, I can see. Additional comments from residents on agenda items?
Wes Poole, on the same item, I don't have a problem with them putting the cameras in and out. We had this, this came up probably 10 years ago, and it was decided that we wouldn't do it. What I would like to know, and it wasn't explained, what exactly is the benefit of these? I realize it takes pictures of license plates, which will help you find stolen cars. And I'm trying to figure out what's the big need. Just give me a plan that says where the cameras are going to be. What problem is it actually solving? Because it's not just, if they're going to pay for the first $36,000, I guess it's fine. Doesn't matter, doesn't come out of something that we otherwise are going to get used to them. But it does come with a $30,000 a year renewal fee, or essentially it's for whatever they call it for, but it's a renewal fee. So the idea of this long-term cost, I'd like to have just some explanation ahead of time, what exactly this is about. Where are you putting the cameras? What are you planning to do with them? How are they going to work? Not, not how they work, but what do they actually accomplish that's solving a problem in the city?
We'll attempt to get that question answered when the legislation comes forth. Additional comments on agenda items?
Hello, my name is Luz Flores. I am a new member, or new, yeah, a member to this community of Sandusky. I come from Indiana. My mom and I own the Latin American grocery store in the Sandusky Plaza. And I guess I don't really know what you guys can do, but hopefully help some of the citizens of this community.
Ma'am, we have two opportunities for the public to speak. This particular section is for comments on what is on our agenda for this evening. I think your comments perhaps belong at the next portion of our meeting, at the end of the meeting, on public comments on any item that pertains to city business. I just couldn't, I just, I couldn't figure out what agenda item you might be talking to. And I'm thinking, is there an item on here in the agenda that you're speaking about?
Oh, I didn't know that there was an agenda. I'm sorry.
That's okay. But you're going to have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to speak on any comment.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You got a good warm-up, though.
Additional comments on agenda items? We're running out of comments on agenda items. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff regarding recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. That objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion's approved. Miss, Commissioners, we have four items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to a regular agenda? Ms. Myers, you present the consent agenda, please.
Item A, which is the second reading, it is the approval of codified ordinance amendment relating to commercial property. Item B is approval for payment to Kirk Appraisal and Consulting for Professional Services. Item C, permission to purchase and install facilities and maintenance vehicle body package from Khalida. Item D, approval of Water Street Parking Lot Easement Agreement with Verizon Wireless.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Vargo.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda items A through D, and declaring that all ordinances and resolutions as drafted and presented to the city shall take effect in accordance with Sections 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Those ordinances are approved. Commissioners, Ms. Myers, you present item number one to the regular agenda.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first and final change order for work performed by Ed Berdu and Company, LLC of Sandusky, Ohio, for the asbestos abatement and demolition of 937 West Washington Street Project in the amount of $28,750 and 25 cents, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Murray.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed amending Part 11 Planning and Zoning Code, Title V, Additional Zoning Requirements, Chapter 1161, Landmark Preservation, Section 1161.03, Establishment of Landmark Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky in a manner and way specifically set here and below, and declaring this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadde.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Just a little bit of history on this. We went through a long and voracious process of, as I indicated earlier, smoothing out all the different boards and commissions, adding term limits, making the term limits consistent, doing a lot of things to bring that into alignment. But I was struck by the importance, I believe it was Commissioner Pajali's comment, that we need to look at these residency issues on a one-by-one basis. I think it's overly complicating this and unnecessarily complicated to require that we only consider this proposal once we've completed that process. That process, the last time, took upwards of 18 months for lots of different reasons, but it took a long time.
Additional discussion, Commissioners?
I also was in tune with Commissioner Pajali's comments and perhaps his thinking. I am, I find it a stretch to believe that we can now or can in the future continue to find people with these types of qualifications on this type of a board. Perhaps landmark is a one of, but I agree with Mr. Murray. I don't think you can, I don't think you can paint all of these with the same brush. That's my, that's my view on additional discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
Yeah, I'm, as I indicated earlier, I'm conflicted on this. And I would really like, I would like to see this, you know, some kind of a compromise, perhaps, you know, move it from two positions to a single, you know, something. But as it stands, I will be a no on this, on this piece of legislation.
Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz.
No.
Mr. Crable.
No.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz.
No.
Mr. Crable.
No.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Erie County Board of Health for utilizing Ohio-led safe home funds for the demolition of a condemned residential structure located at 1528 Columbus Avenue in the city of Sandusky, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kuntz.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance in compliance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the Commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present our last item, item number four. Excuse me, second to last item.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Flock Group Incorporated, DBA Flock Safety of Atlanta, Georgia, for the purchase and installation of 10 license plate recognition cameras for the Sandusky Police Department, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crable.
I would move the approval of item number four, the ordinance, under item number four in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
So I remember when this legislation came up, as Mr. Poole indicated, some 10 years ago. And it wasn't legislation at the time, I think it was just a concept. And at the time, we took a pass. And it was a combination of things, as I recall. I think it was pretty expensive. There were some unanswered privacy concerns at the time. The, I think a lot of the bugs have been worked out of this 10 years later, to the extent they existed at the time. The privacy issues are very well addressed at this point in time. They only take pictures if the, if the, either the car has been stolen, or there's an outstanding warrant for the individual who owns the car, or to whom it's registered, I should say. And then it's only reserved for 30 days. I have spoken with the chief about how this particular information is and can be used. And it's pretty remarkable, you know, in terms of being able to track a suspect through a city or adjoining city. It really does connect the dots in a very important way. I think there are appropriate safeguards, and so I do support this legislation.
Chief, you shared with us at our noon meeting today an instance where you used this kind of a process, kind of backdoored using it, and obtained a license number through a system like this. Can you, can you explain to us exactly how this works and its limitations so we're sure that we're not stepping on someone's rights?
I can, sir. To Commissioner Murray's point, it's a roll in 30 days. That's how it works. Everything's deleted from the system from there. And this is more than just tracking stolen vehicles. This is an investigative tool for law enforcement. It's a nationwide system. It's, there are so many agencies in and around here that have it, tied into it throughout the state, tied into it. I can just put it into real world, what we've experienced through flock cameras. I told you guys about a story, but I'll tell you another one that happened recently. So we were getting calls about a car that was running people off the road, driving recklessly early morning hours, back when school was still in session. One of our officers was on Tiffin Ave, and that car overtook our officer in a cruiser on the wrong side of the road, passed him on the wrong side of his car. He tried to stop that car. system. There are so many agencies in and around here that have it, tied into it throughout the state, tied into it. And I can just put it into real world, what we've experienced through flock cameras. And I told you guys about a story, but I'll tell you another one that happened recently. So we were getting calls about a car that was running people off the road, driving recklessly, early morning hours, back when school was still in session. One of our officers was on Tiffin Ave, and that car overtook our officer, and the cruiser on the wrong side of the road passed him on the wrong side of his car. He tried to stop that car. By the time he was going through that motion to stop in the car, the car had already gained speed on him. It was heading southbound on Tiffin Ave towards Margarita Township. Our officer was only able to identify the car and one of the letters, so we had a partial plate. Where that car was heading was towards Bogart Elementary School during school zone hours, during school traffic. So obviously, the pursuit was terminated immediately. Our officer checked the information that he was able to obtain, which is just a vehicle description and a partial plate, where it would identify that car and who was driving that car within two hours, because of flock, because it had that information. And it's things like that that it's just, it's an investigative tool to further law enforcement. Again, if we have an incident, there's a witness, there was a white Buick that left the scene, we could search white Buick. Might not lead us where we're going, but nine times out of 10, it does. And that's what it comes down to. It's not taking pictures of identities of drivers. It's running the database. If that license plate comes back to an individual that has a warrant, obviously, we get notified that it's a person with a warrant attached to that car. If that car is stolen, obviously, we're told that. But that's few and far between to what flock actually does for law enforcement.
Good enough for me. Comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wattington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wattington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Now, Ms. Myers, you present our new, last item, number five.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager and/or the finance director to expend funds to Wilks and Company Incorporated of Huron, Ohio, for the emergency purchase and installation of a Lochnevar LHS standard high-power commercial water heater at the service center in the amount of $13,366, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wattington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Concludes our regular general. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, commissioners, audience, and staff. The Sandusky Fire Department would like to thank U.S. Subaki for a donation of $750. This donation did not come with any specific request, but was made as a thank you for recent fire extinguisher training that Lieutenant Tom Salmon's performed for all of U.S. Subaki employees. We get a motion to accept that donation.
No move.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Objection, the motion be approved. Here are no objection. That motion is approved with our thanks.
Parks and Rec would like to thank Beth Clark for donating chips and fruit snacks for summer break camp at Mills. Can you motion accept that donation?
No move.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Here are no objection. That motion is approved for our thanks for those snacks.
We will be hosting a very warm ribbon cutting and grand opening for the Columbus Ave streetscape tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 p.m. We encourage people to come down and check out the new street between 4:00 and 6:00, and visit our local businesses along Columbus Ave. More information is available at www.cityofsandusky.com/columbusave. Public Works, the contractors, will be performing the final resurfacing sidewalks and park improvements in the MacArthur Park area over the next few weeks. Thank you for your patience, as this has been a very challenging yet rewarding project. Spirit Brothers and Great Lakes demolition have done a wonderful job navigating many difficulties over the past eight months. And Sandusky Transit effective June 23rd, to meet ridership demand, the Redline fixed route has been redesigned to incorporate new high-capacity vehicles. The Redline will now bypass Shoreline Drive and remain on Water Street. This decision will eliminate Redline stop number 29 at Viewpoint. Please redirect your fixed route transportation needs to Columbus Ave and Water Street, or Franklin and Water Street. Anyone with mobility issues are encouraged to call STS Dispatch to explore paratransit services or other service options. Additional information can be found on the City of Sandusky website or on social media. That concludes my report. Take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Questions or comments for our city manager? Boy, they're letting you off easy, John. No questions, no comments. Items of old business. Any items of old business, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Watting.
I brought this up, I talked to a couple commissioners today and one yesterday. I brought this up in the past and basically got stonewalled as far as having local students volunteer. Presently in Sandusky, it's through St. Pete's and you're on, they have the Yes program, but we have the gentleman's club here in Sandusky that volunteers for everything. And my thought was the paint, I believe Mr. Murray, we had long discussions on this a few years back, and we were told that we couldn't do it from the former city manager said, no, it'd be a liability issue. And I had a conversation with you a few days afterwards. So I would like to research this, if we can clean that up. It'd be nice if we could have our local kids paint maybe one house or two houses a summer, you know, to help out. And then speaking with Ms. Fargo today, she brought up, like, weeding and that. And I think that's a great idea, too. You know, like, we've got a lot of areas in town that could use some spursing up. So.
Mr. Watting.
Mr. Brady.
So I think there was just a misconception at the time that there was some liability associated with that. If we provide paint to a volunteer group that wants to paint a house for a resident that otherwise doesn't have the wherewithal to do so, I'll defer to the law director, but I don't see any liability for that. And nobody in my firm would take that case.
I mean, it just got black, and this is my third time, so I'm hoping I don't strike out. But I think it's nothing but good for the community, you know, to have some kids do something.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Fargo.
I absolutely agree with Mr. Watting. You know, over in Vermillion, they have these beautiful planters, flowers, all the way down, and they have a whole volunteer program of people that come and they water them for them, you know. Because I know we're strapped in our greenhouse department. I know we don't have a ton of employees, but people will step up and do stuff like that. If we open that up, I mean, sometimes I want to go on my walks and take my weed whacker with me, because I want to help some people out. I feel terrible for them, you know. I don't want to be called the lawnmower man, but I do want to maybe help out. I just, you know, I do think people would step up.
I guess an open-ended question I will ask of our city managers. Where will we go with that suggestion, Ms. Torres?
The volunteer.
I'll take it up with the law director, but I don't see any issue with it. As Mr. Murray said, I know there was some discussion in the past, but I'm happy to look at it. And then we would just have to reach out to service groups or let that be known. So I'll take a look at it and report back to you.
Pretty simplistic approach, really, and I think we can certainly grow into maybe a more robust program after we crawl a little ways. Thank you. Additional items of new business.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Real quick comments related to the past Juneteenth events. I thought that all those events went really well. Had a good turnout here at the Jackson Street Pier on Thursday, good turnout at J.C. Park on Friday and Saturday, the way it was set up. I also wanted to take time, particularly on behalf of Barbara Clark, the president of the NAACP Sandusky Unit 3199, to say thank you for those who were there. Thank you for the commission. I know those of you had obligations. It's all good. You would have been there if you could be. But the city manager showed up, was there for a time. Commissioner Crable actually read a proclamation, and Commissioner Brady was involved in bringing that to fruition. So just wanted to say thank you. It was a job well done.
Thank you, Commissioner Coons, and thank you for your involvement. And I know this is your first program like that, and we'll know next year if they overworked you, won't we?
You see the tan, right?
Yeah. Additional items of new business.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Need to request that we set an executive session for litigation, so I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wattington?
Yes.
And a second.
Point of order, the audience participation is listed before the executive session on the agenda.
To get to audience participation, yes.
Okay.
That typically comes after new business is over with, Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Oh, you're looking at the order.
We just voted on an executive session, so.
Got it. Okay. Well, we're going to get to it now, unless there's any new items of new business. Any residents with comments on any item pertaining to city business, please step to the podium and give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts. And I'll remind you that this section of the program, the agenda, is not meant to be a question-and-answer session, but it's for us to hear your thoughts.
Hi. Again, I'm a new member of the city. My name is Flores. I come from Indiana. My mom and I own the Latin American grocery store. So I think the cameras that are being added and the reasons that they're being added on is great. I'm just kind of concerned as to who would have access and what agencies and for what purpose. Because my business is being affected by the ICE raids, and I know that the Juneteenth events probably would have had a really great turnout, too, from the Latino community, but right now they're afraid to come out of their house. Three people were detained, not necessarily outside of my business, but in the same plaza. Three legal Venezuelan citizens never had an order of deportation or anything telling them that they needed to self-deport or to leave. They had a valid driver's license, an insured vehicle, things that at our store, I'm always telling them, hey, if you're going to be driving, insure your car. Do things the right way. You're in a new country. Contribute and make sure you're doing things right. That's what I promote, and that's what I help these people do. So I think I would like to talk about what type of protections we can afford these people. I understand if they get pulled over and they're driving without a license, or if they commit a crime, domestic violence, assault somebody, those type of things, please, yes, take them out. They're idiots. Shouldn't be here. But if they are taxpayers, they're contributing to this community and doing things the right way by, again, paying taxes, having a job, not getting in any kind of trouble, those type of people are the people we want. Those are the people that we're going to want, those kids growing up in this community. Because this is a beautiful city. I come from a small town, corn all around me. So this is amazing. And I just think that, I don't know if we are helping ICE necessarily, because whenever I talk to the officers or whoever they are, if they're officers, they said that they're here illegally. The kids, the guys, the two women and man that they took are here illegally. They have their documentation. When they cross the border, they turn themselves over to Border Patrol. We gave them asylum, and they've been doing things the right way. None of them had had any contact with police or anything. So I think those are the people we want here. They paid their taxes. I know people who haven't paid their taxes that are U.S. citizens. So they're doing things the right way. Those are the people we should be protecting. Those are people that we want them to see what great Americans do to help them, because America is a great country. And so I think that they are contributing, and against the ones that aren't, I'm okay with them leaving. But they have to have, I feel like if criminals, people who are bound to create some type of crime or whatever, they have contact with police. They already have a record. They have some type of crime that they've committed. These haven't. So it breaks my heart. It's impacting my business. So not even just my business, my just being here, you know. My city that I come from, we're full of Latinos, and I think it's beautiful. We have, like, seven Latin American grocery stores over there, and I would love to see the same here. I see such great diversity. So I think we can do a little bit better and maybe try to help our Latino community here, because they could also be people that we should be seeing in the board, too. So I just, I pray that we can do better and do something for those that are contributing to this community and help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Hello, Seth Strickfadden, 215 McDonough. I just kind of want to talk about our history for a little bit. And 160 years ago, in the 70s before that, about the Underground Railroad and our founders, they participated in it. A lot of people were calling them fugitives at the time, but we called them people, and we did something about it, you know. You know, not morals, faith, that's what took on that law, you know. People like Lucas Beecher, whose cousin came here and famously wrote Uncle Tom's Cabin, about Sandusky, you know. Rush Sloan, Thomas McGee, he mastered all the ships to crossing into Canada. And right now, maybe it seems like verbally or exaggerating to say that, make a connection to Underground Railroad, but our neighbors are scared, and they are in trouble, and they are who you guys have voted to represent, all of them, regardless of their status. It's an unfortunate opportunity, but we do have an opportunity to do something. I know we can't do anything about ICE, you know, federal agents, but locally, what are we doing about our own resources being used to assist them? You know, there's people showing up with badges covered up, on masks, or masks, and unmarked vehicles, and then there's our cops right next to them, helping. I don't want my resources going for that. I think everyone here doesn't want their resources going to that. You guys talked about, you know, Jim Obergefell and these, the history of the buildings and everything else around here. And this is an opportunity to really step up and make a statement for our city. I know what I'm going to do. I hope you guys know what you're going to do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strickfadden.
My name is Joseph Reto. I live at 709 Perry Street.
Oh, I didn't get my address. Sorry.
It's okay.
In the last six weeks, I've seen a man about to commit suicide. Last night, I saw, two nights ago, I saw what appeared to be, from the weight of the light hitting an automatic weapon, stopping a car, getting into a full S U P. Three weeks prior to that, this is all approximate, I seen a woman get thrown out of a car and land. And all of that took resources of what we needed. I worry about how we're using our resources. Reaction time and time coming, especially right now with the influx of people in town, is really important. When I read in the paper that there was people there with masks over their faces and a badge covered up, now we're talking Constitution. And that's what I'm worried about. So how we vote, how we use, how we use resources. I know there's going to be a time where we need to do it in conjunction, but it has to be done well. It has to be done within the rights of the people. To me, that was not in the rights of the people. If we had our Sandusky officer standing there, and somebody asked to be identified, and they didn't, man, what an embarrassment. What an embarrassment. Because I think we're better than that. I know when John was chief, the city felt like it was going better. I'm assuming it'll be the same. I'm hoping we can get on a path to where we're using our resources. Because like I said, that was me. Three incidents. That's all over the place. And if we can't call on you because we're with guys with masks on pulling people out, what are we doing for our own citizens right here? So I hope we do better. I don't want to see any, any officer, a Sandusky officer, standing with ICE with masks on, unless their life is in jeopardy. I understand there's some overlap, not completely ignorant, but just to show up and be standing there with them, I don't understand that. So. I don't, I'm just telling you what was reported, not you. I'm just telling you, if that's happening, that's what I'm saying, if that's happening. Believe me, I'm for you guys. Automatic weapon, suicide, and a lady thrown out of her car. All three times, you know, the first people I thought of was your department, to make sure that we could, with the workers, there was two ladies over there last night, okay? They were scared, stopped dead in their tracks by this 16, 17-year-old kid with what appeared to be, maybe it was, maybe it wasn't, I don't know. But my point is, back to that, I still stand on that. If anybody is coming to Sandusky, I don't know, it was reported that they weren't identified, their badge was covered up. Your badge shouldn't be covered up, right? So even on a badge cover-up, that's enough for me to go, what's the attitude there behind that? I'm not ignorant. I understand what that means beyond that. If they believe in what they're doing, have it out. That's fine. So that's all I'm going to say. But I hope we're using our resources appropriately, because in all three of those cases, the police showed up, the people were gone on two of them. It deescalated, not just because of the police. So we can't even get to them sometimes, fast enough. So that's my.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We'll move to executive session.
Okay.
Don't upstairs.
Stay in here.
We've returned to from executive session at exactly seven o'clock. I'll entertain a motion to return from executive session.